This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. I am a man who is not a woman. This is it, this is it. I am a man who is not a woman. I am a man who is not a woman. This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. I am a man who is not a woman. I am a man who is not a woman. This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. I will go to the church. I will pray. 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 This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. I am a man who is not a woman. I am a man who is not a woman. This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman. This is the end of the song. I will sing for you. I am a man who is not a woman.
I have seen a new person. I have seen a new person. Is he here? Is he here? He has a Hindi chorus song. It is only gospel song. Do you know who is he?
Do you know who is he? Today I am telling you. Do not forget. Do not forget. The Lord is the God of the world. He is the God of the world. The Lord is the God of the world. He is the God of the world. The Lord is the God of the world. He is the God of the world. The Lord is the God of the world. He is the God of the world. Do you know who is he? Today I am telling you. Do not forget. Do not forget. The Lord is the God of the world. He is the God of the world. The Lord is the God of the world. He is the God of the world. I have died. 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 Do you know who is he? Today I am telling you. Do not forget. Do not forget. Do not forget. Do not forget.
Do you know who is Jesus? If you think about him, you will find him in your life. I am here. Raise your hand. I am here. Brother, first time. Brother. Okay. Brother, pray. Ask God for his blessings. Blessings. Brother, pray. Brother, pray.
We welcome you in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
We welcome you in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
We welcome each one of you for this evening service that God has prepared for you.
We welcome you in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We welcome you in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
The Lord has a message for each one of us this evening.
The Lord has a message for each one of us this evening. The Lord has a message for each one of us this evening.
We are looking at the theme "Come, let us build."
We are looking at the theme "Come, let us build."
And so we are going to, in the morning, we looked at how we need to build the kingdom of God, how we need to work for the kingdom of God.
We are going to look at this time, a man who worked for the kingdom of God. We are going to look at this time, a man who worked for the kingdom of God.
As the word of God comes to you, we ask you to be alert and to be focused to hear the voice of God.
We turn to the book of Nehemiah, chapter 2. We turn to the book of Nehemiah, chapter 2.
Verse 17 and 18 is talking about how Nehemiah was inspiring the people to get into the work of the Lord.
He says to them, "You see the distress that we are in, how Jerusalem lies in waste and its gates are burnt with fire." He says to them, "You see the distress that we are in, how Jerusalem lies in waste and its gates are burnt with fire." He says to them, "How many men are there who are burning?
And then he says, "Come, let us build the walls of Jerusalem."
He says to them,
"That we may no longer in this reproach."
He says to them,
"And this evening, the Lord is calling each one of us to come and involve in the work of the kingdom of God."
He says to them, "Come, let us build the walls of Jerusalem."
Shall we look to God in prayer?
We will look to God in prayer.
Everyone close your eyes and ask the Lord to speak to you.
We will close our eyes. We will look to God.
There could be many distractions in your mind.
There could be many distractions in your mind.
But when you ask the Lord to speak to you,
He will not send you disappointed. He will not send you disappointed.
He is faithful and he will fill you and he will meet your need this evening.
He will meet your need this evening.
Tell the Lord, "Lord, speak to me."
Tell the Lord, "Lord, speak to me."
Everyone of us are needy people.
We are all needy people.
And the Lord only can meet our needs.
We only can meet our needs.
Heavenly Father, we ask you, Lord, that you will speak to us this evening.
We ask you, Lord, that you will speak to us this evening.
It is not by might, not by power, but by your spirit you will speak to us.
It is not by might, not by power, but by your spirit you will speak to us.
We know, Lord, that you have a message for each one of us.
We know, Lord, that you have a message for each one of us.
Help us, Lord, to be in open and obedient mind.
We ask you that you will bind the forces of darkness in the name of Jesus. We ask you that you will bind the forces of darkness in the name of Jesus.
Lord, we pray that you will move among us.
We pray that you will move among us.
Lord, we pray that your Holy Spirit will brood over us.
We pray that your Holy Spirit will brood over us.
Lord, we pray that every one of us will be gripped with the presence of God here.
We pray that every one of us will be gripped with the presence of God here.
We thank you, we praise you, Lord, for what you are going to do in our midst.
We thank you, we praise you, Lord, for what you are going to do in our midst.
We give you all honor and glory, we ask this in Jesus.
We give you all honor and glory, we ask this in Jesus.
Amen. Nehemiah was an ordinary man, but he was a cup bearer to the king.
Nehemiah was an ordinary man, but he was a cup bearer to the king.
And he was there in the presence of the king and he wanted to know about his country.
He wanted to know about his country.
He has been taken as exile and he was a slave there.
He has been taken as exile and he was a slave there.
But he always had an affection to his own country.
But he always had an affection to his own country.
And so he was inquiring about what is happening there.
And so he was inquiring about what is happening there.
And when he asked, it is said that the walls of Jerusalem has been burned down with fire and it's all in destruction.
And it's all in destruction.
And he played a crucial role of building the walls of Jerusalem.
And he played a crucial role of building the walls of Jerusalem.
An ordinary man, God used so powerfully.
An ordinary man, God used so powerfully.
This evening, who were here, the Lord knows who you are.
This evening, who were here, the Lord knows who you are.
And he wants to use every one of you.
And he wants to use every one of you.
Nehemiah was a man of action.
Nehemiah was a man of action.
Nehemiah means God comforts.
Nehemiah means God comforts.
And God has used him so powerfully.
And God has used him so powerfully.
And the same way God will use you, each even of us in this the way.
And the same way God will use you, each even of us in this the way.
The first thing that I see in his life is that he was a man of accountability.
The first thing that I see in his life is that he was a man of accountability.
When you opened the book of Nehemiah in the Bible,
When you opened the book of Nehemiah in the Bible,
The first chapter, verse 2, it says that, "I questioned them about the Jewish remnant and had survived as exile and also about Jerusalem."
The first chapter, verse 2, it says that, "I questioned them about the Jewish remnant and had survived as exile and also about Jerusalem."
Why should Nehemiah question about that?
Why should Nehemiah question about that?
Right now, he is in the king's palace
Right now, he is in the king's palace
and he has got all kinds of facility,
and he has got all kinds of facility,
all kinds of comforts, luxury that he can enjoy.
All kinds of comforts, luxury that he can enjoy.
But his heart was about his own country.
But his heart was about his own country.
Daily beloved, that each one of us asked to be kingdom people.
Daily beloved, that each one of us asked to be kingdom people.
God's kingdom people.
God's kingdom people.
When we are God's kingdom people,
When we are God's kingdom people,
we will be responsible.
We will be responsible.
We will be inquiring about how God's kingdom is being built.
We will be inquiring about how God's kingdom is being built.
We will be always have the sense of ownership about God's kingdom.
We will be always have the sense of ownership about God's kingdom.
Brother, sister, every one of us are called to be part of the citizens of the God's kingdom.
We are called to be part of the citizens of the God's kingdom.
The thing that I want to bring your attention is,
The thing that I want to bring your attention is,
Whose job is this?
Whose job is this?
It is not the job of a cup bearer, Nehemiah.
It is not the job of a cup bearer, Nehemiah.
He can be just comfortable in that way.
He can be just comfortable in that way.
But he had the sense of responsibility.
But he had the sense of responsibility.
He had the sense of ownership.
He had the sense of ownership.
Therefore, he was accountable.
Therefore, he was accountable.
And he was, you know, he took the initiative to start this.
And he was, you know, he took the initiative to start this.
Some years back, I was conducting a seminar on servant leadership.
Some years back, I was conducting a seminar on servant leadership.
It was a one-day seminar.
It was a one-day seminar.
And I was, I went to the washroom to use that place.
And I went to the washroom to use that place.
When I went into the toilet,
When I went into the toilet,
I saw a leaking tap.
I saw a leaking tap.
And water was wasted.
And water was wasted.
So when I came back,
So when I came back,
and then I started my session.
And then I started my session.
And I asked the congregation, the participants,
And I asked the congregation, the participants,
When you are going into the toilet, when you see a leaking tap,
When you are going into the toilet, when you see a leaking tap,
Whose responsibility to fix that problem?
Whose responsibility to fix that problem?
Then one person answered.
Then one person answered.
It is pastor's job.
It is pastor's job.
Another person said,
Another person said,
It is the job of caretaker.
It is the job of caretaker.
And then another person said,
And then another person said,
It is the property committee's responsibility.
It is the property committee's responsibility.
You know, all these participants belong to the church, but they are all pushing their responsibility to others.
But they are all pushing their responsibility to others.
And no one was coming forward to take that responsibility.
And no one was coming forward to take that responsibility.
I asked them primarily, "Whose church is this?"
I asked them primarily, "Whose church is this?"
They all said, "It is our church."
They all said, "It is our church."
And I said, "No, I want a particular answer."
And I said, "No, I want a particular answer."
Yes, you are saying it is our church.
Yes, you are saying it is our church.
Unless you come to say it is my church, you will not feel that responsibility.
You will not feel that responsibility.
Today in Christianity, we have this "our" and you know, they are. And so we want to pluralize everything and so it doesn't hit you personally.
And so it doesn't hit you personally.
And each one of us, if we are accountable in the presence of God,
And each one of us, if we are accountable in the presence of God,
God has given stewardship of everything that God has gave to us.
God has given stewardship of everything that God has gave to us.
Kingdom people will not discount themselves.
Kingdom people will not discount themselves.
But they will say, "I will do it, I will do it."
But they will say, "I will do it, I will do it."
Nehemiah was such a person.
Nehemiah was such a person.
So he initiated that.
So he initiated that.
Brother, sister,
Brother, sister,
you cannot look at the kingdom of God and say, "Let them do it."
You cannot look at the kingdom of God and say, "Let them do it."
Let the missionaries do it.
Let the missionaries do it.
Let the evangelists do it.
Let the evangelists do it.
Let the Lord's servant do it.
Let the Lord's servant do it.
It is your responsibility.
It is your responsibility.
You know, this word "responsibility" is coming from this morning till now.
You know, this word "responsibility" is coming from this morning till now.
And repeatedly, the Lord is reminding that.
And repeatedly, the Lord is reminding that.
Secondly, when you look at Nehemiah,
Secondly, when you look at Nehemiah,
He was not only a man of accountability, he is a man of credibility.
He is a man of credibility.
His life was respected by others.
His life was respected by others.
Nehemiah, chapter 2, verse 2 says,
Nehemiah, chapter 2, verse 2 says,
The king is asking him,
The king is asking him,
"Why are you looking so sad?
Why are you looking so sad?
You don't look sick to me, you must be deeply troubled."
You must be deeply troubled.
Then I was terrified, says Nehemiah.
Then I was terrified, says Nehemiah.
Look at the king, looking at Nehemiah.
Look at the king, looking at Nehemiah.
He was able to see the sickness in his heart.
He was able to see the sickness in his heart.
How?
How?
Because he had a credible relationship with the king.
Because he had a credible relationship with the king.
And he was a very responsible person.
And he was a very responsible person.
As a cup bearer to the king,
As a cup bearer to the king,
the king's security is in his hand.
The king's security is in his hand.
You know, when you are, you know, as a cup bearer, he is pouring wine to the king.
He is pouring wine to the king.
And king's life is in his hand.
And king's life is in his hand.
And so king has to trust him completely.
And so king has to trust him completely.
I see the Bible tells that Nehemiah was a man of credibility.
I see the Bible tells that Nehemiah was a man of credibility.
Kingdom people will always put God's interest above their own interests.
Kingdom people will always put God's interest above their own interests.
Yes, they will always be having a person of integrity thinking about the kingdom's need.
Thinking about the kingdom's need.
And their protection comes from the Lord.
And their protection comes from the Lord.
The word of God tells us,
The word of God tells us,
in Proverbs, chapter 22, verse 29,
In Proverbs, chapter 22, verse 29,
Do you see a man who excels in his work? He will stand before the kings and he will not stand before unknown men.
He will not stand before unknown men.
That is the promise of God.
That is the promise of God.
God's protection and honor will be given to people who are a person of integrity.
Who are a person of integrity.
Yes, he was a man of credibility and his work was appreciated by the king.
Yes, he was a man of credibility
First we saw that he was a man of accountability.
First we saw that he was a man of accountability.
Second we saw that he was a man of credibility.
Second we saw that he was a man of credibility.
Then thirdly,
Then thirdly,
he is a man of tenacity and determination.
He is a man of tenacity and determination.
Sanballath and Tobiah was against the Lord's servant.
Sanballath and Tobiah was against the Lord's servant.
And they were giving lots of trouble.
And they were giving lots of trouble.
They poured insults on what were that they were doing.
They poured insults on what were that they were doing.
And not only that, they were trying to discourage the work of the Lord.
And not only that, they were trying to discourage the work of the Lord.
See how they discouraged Nehemiah.
See how they discouraged Nehemiah.
Nehemiah, 4:3 says,
Nehemiah, 4:3 says,
Tobiah, the ammonite, who was standing beside him remarked, "That stone wall would collapse even if a fox walked along the top of it."
That stone wall would collapse even if a fox walked along the top of it.
Dear brother, sister, when you want to do the kingdom work,
Dear brother, sister, when you want to do the kingdom work,
It will not be in the absence of the problem, it will be in the presence of the problem.
It will be in the presence of the problem.
You will face all kinds of challenges.
You will face all kinds of challenges.
Many will be blocking you, they will be putting all kinds of hindrance to you.
They will be putting all kinds of hindrance to you.
They will be opposing what you are doing.
They will be opposing what you are doing.
But we need to have the determination and the perseverance to do the work of the Lord.
To do the work of the Lord.
You know what the word of God says?
You know what the word of God says?
In Romans, chapter 8, verse 31,
In Romans, chapter 8, verse 31,
"Then what shall we say about such wonderful things as these? If God is for us, who can ever be against us?"
If God is for us, who can ever be against us?
If God is for us, who can be against us?
If God is for us, who can be against us?
We have to be remembering this when we are doing the kingdom work.
We have to be remembering this when we are doing the kingdom work.
The secret of success and motivation for Nehemiah was the vision and the completion of the task that God has given to him.
The secret of success and motivation for Nehemiah Yes, he was seeing the vision, how nice it would be, how beautiful it would be Jerusalem will look when the walls of Jerusalem is built up. When the walls of Jerusalem is built up.
I want to ask you, what is your vision?
I want to ask you, what is your vision?
Are you having a vision about God's kingdom?
Are you having a vision about God's kingdom?
God has given us a big picture in Revelation, chapter 7.
What is the Revelation 7:9 talks about?
What is the Revelation 7:9 talks about? And in the presence of the lamp of God, there will be people from all nations, all tribes. And in the presence of the lamp of God, there will be people from all nations, all tribe, all tongues will be holding the palm branches.
Ivaygalakupunpuna, paththobodhi, idho sagala, jaadigale, kothrungale, janangale, baachakarale, andhi vandhalum, oru unhe, ennath kodha, thirulana, kodhamagya, janangal, velle, angiala, tarithi, tangal, kaygalay, kurutholay, pidithi, singaasarathikumunbaga, aattukutyanavarkumunbaga, nirka khande.
Yes, brother and sister, this is the big picture that we are working on.
Aam, armiana sakodhanne, sakodhriye, indha oru priyay, sambhavathir kaththa, ningal, naaluk, anga, ulathikundirikirao.
When you go to sleep, you need to think about this vision.
Indhi avidamake, ningal, thungumudhu, indha, kachya, kondi, ennithkondi, parigal.
When you get up in the morning, we should have that big vision.
Anga, indha adhikale, enna, porudhu, priyay, darasurathte, kanpeerag.
The big vision is that God, we are going to stand in the presence of God.
Andh, priyay, darasuram enna, devunde sanidhanathile, naam, nirka phoyiro.
Multitude that no one can count.
Anga, yavuunhe, ennath kodha, kodha, thirulana, janakodha.
How they will come there?
Avidamake, avarunandharag.
Because of your involvement.
Anga, avan ungal de, ulathpinale, ungal de, yedu parinalai.
Yes, because of you are working in the kingdom of God.
Devunde raja barathile, ningal, ulath, ulathpinale.
God is counting each one of you.
Andoraga, devan, ungal, overorayuk, endikundirikara.
But do you have that vision?
Andh, oru darasuram undha.
You know, many years back, I was conducting a youth camp in Calicut.
Calicutale, oru youth camp, avidamake, chalnala, avan, adil, manathine.
And I was asking to the young people.
Vaali vamakale paththikettan.
What is your, what is your aim, what is your aspiration in your life?
Ungal de, nokkamanne, ungal de, valkele, ungal de lucky, ennath kettan.
And then, one by one, people, as usual, they were saying, I want to become doctor, engineer, IT worker, and all that.
Angal, overoram, naam, doctor, oruven, IT, 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 vallu, 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 oruven, enni, overorun chunnarag.
One young man said.
Oru vaali vamakage chunnan.
I want to become SSO.
Oru, naam, SSO, aga, virmugirin, vandha chunnan.
And I never heard about this.
Indha SSO, andha vaachakurithi, naam, kellyupadavellai.
So I stopped him.
Naam, avne, nirthiene.
I said, I asked, what is SSO?
Avan paththikettan, SSO, enna, arthamandri.
And that man, that young man was telling me.
Andh, vaali vamakale.
SSO means.
SSO, enna.
Simply sitting officer.
Anga, eledi, eledi, edida, shadaravu, vandukundirikindre, oru officer.
Look at the vision.
Avan de darasurathte, parigalai.
Simply sitting officer.
Anga, shadaravu, chumma, vandukundirikara, oru, adiyari.
Young man, young woman, you are here, and the Lord is asking, what is your vision?
Anga, vaali vamakale, vaali vamakale, sakodhriye, indhi ningal, vittikirigalai, kattar, ungalai, paththikakara, ungal de darasuram enna.
You know, there is two things, one.
Indhi karaygal.
One is vision.
Undru darasuram.
The other one is dream.
Adhathu, kanaavu.
What is the difference between vision and the dream?
Indha darasurathirukum, kanaavukumla, vityasavanna.
The dream will make you to sleep well.
Indha kanaavu, ungal, nalala, thungaavikku.
But, you know, you will get dream, because if you have heavy food, you will have all kinds of dream.
Anga, avidamake, nalala, onavarendivutti, ningal, saappadala, nalala, vahavagayana, kanaavuvaru.
But we are not talking about that kind of a dream.
Naam, ippla, kanaavale, patti, pesidhakada agilai.
Vision will, will not allow you to sleep.
Anal, darasuramirikiradu, ungal de thunga, anumadikkaadu.
The vision will pull you, push you to do, and put it in action, what is the vision that God has given to you.
Andoraga, devan, ungal kodutha, darasurathte, niravetthakada agi, adhu ungal de thundu, ungal de, uckavikku.
Someone said like this.
Oru avidamake chunnarag.
Vision without action is merely a dream.
Anga, avidamake, sailpadadi, illaadu, oru darasuramanaadu, adhu oru kanaavu, thanirundha chunnan.
Action without a vision just passes the time.
Anga, avidamake, andha darasurathirki, naam, anga, sailpadamalirundha, adhi kaalathke, kattukundupavudhu than.
Vision with action can change the world.
Avidamake, andha darasurathke, etthavidamake, naam, sailpadumayana, ulakthaya, machuvo.
Amen.
Amen.
You know, vision with action can change the world.
Anga, darasurathodhu, kuritha, sailbadu, indhi ulakthaya, machu.
This is the call that God has given to each one of us.
Indha alapada, andoraga, devan, ungal, overorikun kodukkara.
Who are you maybe?
Nikal yaaragarnal, sari.
God is calling you to that vision.
Andh, oru darasurathirka, kattar, ungalai, alakkara.
First of all.
Uddalavu.
You need to know the love of Christ.
Anga, kristvin, anbe, ningal, arindirikavendu.
Secondly, you need to accept Jesus Christ in your heart.
Indhaavudhe, ungal de irujathile, andoraga, yes, kristva, ettu kolavendu.
Thirdly, you need to believe that Jesus died for your sins.
Undralavu, andoraga, yes, kristva, ungal de, paavangalaka, maritharun, nambe vendu.
And then, you need to confess your sins and receive Jesus Christ in your heart.
Adharkupunpuna, ungal de, paavangalay, arikettu, andoraga, yes, kristva, ungal de, irujathile, ettu kolavendu.
And the Bible says that you will be given the right to become a child of God.
Avidamake, avare, ningal, anga, ettu kolamudhu, avan de, pillaila, irukkakada agi, ungal de, adhikaramundu, enni, veerakshurudhu.
If you don't have that assurance that you are not a child of God, this is the time to accept Jesus Christ.
Devunde pillai, enna, anubomilamal, irupukumayana, idhu than, sariyana, veerle, ungal de.
But every child of God has to have this vision.
Anal, ovvaru, katturudhe pillaiko, indha darasuramtheve.
You be a person of passion and this vision.
Anga, aginale, ungal, overorukku, indha darasurathirki, oru vaanjayavulala, pirippamulala, agirukavendu.
What is your vision this evening?
Indha maale veerle, ungal de, vaanjayavu, darasuram enna.
Is it the kingdom of God or your own kingdom?
Illa, raja barama, illa, angal, manamora, valkeya.
The prayer that God has, I mean, Jesus has taught to us.
Anga, andoraga, yes, kristva, namakke, kattukodutha, the jaba manadu.
What we say is, we say it is a Lord's prayer.
Adhu, katturudhe jaba mandrala choligirao.
No, Lord, it is not Lord's prayer, it is disciples' prayer.
Idhe, katturudhe jaba, alla, adhu, sheeshigurudhe, jaba.
Because he has taught us to pray that way.
Enna, avidamake, jabikavendu, vandri, yes, kristva, namakke, kattukodutha.
If you are praying that prayer.
Andh, jabathen, ningal, eeladukumudhu.
What are we saying?
Namennachaligro.
Let your kingdom come.
Umde, rajaamorathu.
Let your will be done.
Umde, sittham, niravarathu.
It is not my kingdom, it is not my will.
Ennu de rajaam, ennu de sittham alla.
It is the kingdom, it is the will of God.
Adhu, katturudhe rajaam, adhu, devunde sittham.
So we saw that Nehemia is a man of accountability.
Anga, avidamake, kanathukodu kavundila agundha, manidilaka than.
And then, Nehemia is a man of credibility.
Anga, avidamake, uttravadumulamani vandha agundha.
Then Nehemia is a man of tenacity and determination.
Avan tirmanamulamani vandha, niravetthi, ronaga than.
And then, the fourth thing is.
Nangaavudhikaariyam.
Nehemia is a man of intercession.
Anga, parindhipesigiradu, oru, manidilaka than.
Yes, he was a man of prayer.
Avan aga, jaba varan, aviranaga than.
In the entire episode that we see, our hero Nehemia was a man of prayer and intercession.
Anga, avidamake, nehemia, oru jaba varanage, avan anga, parindhipesigiradu, manidilaka than.
The first chapter completely tells about his prayer.
Uddalavu, adiyarav, parkumudhu, avan de, jabathen, kurithu, muttilu, maavicholigiradu.
What moved him to be a man of intercession?
Anga, avidamake, oru, parindhipesigiradu, manidilaga, avan anga, macha padthan.
In chapter one, verse four.
Nehemia, nehemya, unpu sahathu, uddalavu, 9, 11.
So it was when I heard these words.
Naan, indha vasarugale, kettamathrathale.
I sat down and wept and mourned for many days.
Anga, naam, anga, amarundhi, aney, aludhi, aney, naathla, naam, thuyarathodhi.
And I was fasting and praying before the God of heaven.
Anga, parlothin, devan, nokki, manradhi, naam, jabitha padudhu.
Look at how he was moved by the Spirit of God.
Avidamake, deva, aviyana, avan, avan, asaykappadhan, enni, parigal.
If you are a kingdom person.
Ningal, anga, devan, raja barathte, navaraagirundha.
God is calling you for an intercessory ministry.
Anga, andor, ungal, parindhipesigiradu, ooleyathirikavu, ungal de, alakkara.
Intessory prayer is a prayer for every one of us.
Anga, avidamake, parindhipesigiradu, jaba manadu, overorukaage, naam, eeladukkara, jaba.
You know, our prayer is not an intercessory prayer.
Hey, namudhe, jaba, anga, parindhipesigiradu, jaba, milyan, terima.
Most of our prayer is not an intercessory prayer.
Namudhe, naam, eeladukkara, aney, jaba, anga, parindhipesigiradu, jaba, anga, illai.
It is not a kingdom prayer.
Adhu, devunde, raja barathre, jaba, alla.
I want to tell you.
Naam, chullavurumigre.
This, I would like to call most of our prayer as kindergarten prayer.
Anga, parkumudhu, anga, kindergarten, padikalal, pillaigal, andha pillai, jaba, marthu, namudhe, jaba, marthu.
Why it is a kindergarten prayer?
Enna, kindergarten, jaba, jaba, marukradu.
You talk, you taught your children.
Ningal, anga, pillaila, kodha, pesigirirugal.
And you told them to pray.
Avarle paththi, jabikathakada, cholamudhu.
You pray ma.
Ma, ni, jab, jab, enni, chunnan.
And you say, Lord.
Andore.
Bless me.
Enni, aasiravadiyo.
Bless my pa, papa, mama.
Ennu de, apavu, ammaavu, aasiravadiyo.
Bless my brother, sister.
Enni, sakodhanne, sakodhriye, aasiravadiyo.
Amen.
Amen.
This is the kindergarten prayer that we do.
Idhu than, arumannele, jaba, naam, seyiradu.
This is not the kingdom prayer.
Idhi, devunde, rajaathile, jaba, alla.
Look at the prayer of Nehemia.
Nehemia, jaba, thaparigal.
It was about the kingdom.
Adhu, devunde, rajaathte, kuritha, than, jaba.
And all of us are, change our prayer from kindergarten prayer to kingdom prayer.
Ailai, arumannele, jaba, thilandhi, devunde, raja barathte, jaba, lake, agi, naam, maruvo, machuvo.
Not only that.
Adhu, maathram alla.
His prayer shows his complete dependence on God.
Anga, avan de, jaba manadu, avidamake, mulumayake, avan devanee, saandhirundha, enna, vandhi, kathigiradu.
And the man of God was always praying.
Anga, katturudhe, manidilana, avan, yavodhu, meetha, vithikundirundha.
In the second chapter, we saw that king is asking, what is your problem?
Anga, indhaavudhe, adiyarathale, paththo, raja paththi, nehemia, kettkara, ya, ungal de, ennath prachinai.
And then, in verse four.
Nangaavudhicholigiradu.
When the king asked him, what is your request, so I prayed to the God of heaven.
Avidamake, raja, enne paththi, ni, kattkara, karayam, enna, enna, appudan, parlothin, devan, nokki, jaba, manni.
Yes, every time, every moment, I am depending on the Lord.
Ovaru, morayuk, ovaru, shalapodhum, ovaru, sandrapadhalu, naam, devanee, saandhirukre.
Yes, my dear brothers and sisters.
Enni, karimana, sakodhanne, sakodhriye.
Every one of us are, are asked to pray for all the people in this world.
Indha ulathul, yellamakal, agi, naam, overorum, jabikathakada agi, ketkappadigro.
Saint Paul, when he was writing to his spiritual son, Timothy.
Anga, parshita, powala, timothi, ka, avan, eludumudhu.
Chapter one, chapter, first timothy, chapter two, verse one.
Undru timothi, rendu, undrile.
Therefore, I sought, first of all, all the supplication, prayers, intercession, and giving thanks made known for all men. First timothy, chapter two, verse one.
Undru timothi, 2, 11, 12, anga, avidamake, namadhi, baachikalavu, naam, pranamay, choligiradu, buti, enavadi, yellam, manusharukka, vinnappangalayuk, jaba, angalayuk, venu, dhalayuk, sotthangalayuk, pannavendu.
Look at how it says, for all men, we have to pray.
Anga, yellam, manusharukka, naam, jabikavendu.
You know, our prayer is kindergarten prayer, so it finishes in seconds.
Naam, namudhe, jaba, manadu, arumannele, jaba, marukradu, oru, shalapodhalayuk, yadu, mudinjukradu.
But if you are praying for all men.
Anga, yellam, manusharukka, jabipirigalana.
What is the population of India?
India, ungal de, janathakayavu.
One point four billion people.
Unru, unru, puli, nalibilyan, makal.
These crores of people.
Kodikannakana, makal.
You have to think about them and pray about them.
Avarle kurithi, ennith paththu, laage, maathramalla, avanuka, jabikavendu.
We have to pray for all twenty-eight states and tall union territories.
Anga, avidamake, 28, maagana, anga, 8, 8, territory, naam, anga, jabikavendu.
And not only that, there are more than twenty thousand pin codes in India.
Anga, India, 20,000, makal, urikrakag, 20,000, makal, urikrakag.
Pin codes.
Pin, pin code.
And in every pin code, there is minimum of three lakhs people.
Anga, over, pin code, parkumudhu, 3 lakhs, makal, irukkara.
But do you know that in many pin codes, not even one Christian witness?
Anga, parkumudhu, oru, pin code, parkumudhu, oru, kristvin, shaachi, illaadu, edangalamirikradu.
States in north, about twelve states, less than one percent Christians.
Anga, panirunnu, maagana, angalale, parkumudhu, anga, oru, saadivu, kristvin, koravagathanirikradu.
How much we need to pray?
Yavola, adhivamagana, jabikavendu.
Kingdom people will be looking at all this.
Anga, devunde, rajaathul, makal, vila, allati, barparigal.
All the people group, people groups in this country.
Yellam, indha, indha, naathile, ulle, yellam, kudukkum, makal.
And not only that.
Adhu, maathram alla.
All kinds of people who speak all kinds of languages and dialects.
Anga, yellam, vahayana, makal, parathrapattu, muligale, pesigiramakal.
We need to pray.
Naam, jabikavendu.
Are you a kingdom person?
Anga, ningal, raja barathul, makal, agirigal.
Are you a kingdom builder?
Indhi, raja barathte, kattigaramakal, agirukroma.
We are called to be kingdom builders.
Naam, katturudhe, rajaathte, kattavendu, ungal de, makalaka, alakkappadigro.
And we are called to be intercessors, standing between God and man, praying for these people.
Indha makalaka, devanukum, avanukku, ooda, enni, parindhipesigiradu, jaba, angalay, eeladukkavendu, makalaka, irukkara.
Nehemia was such person.
Nehemia, avidamale, navaraagirundha.